Five, I'd like to call the meeting to order if you'd rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are short two board members this evening. Ms. Andrews, Mr. Stock are not present. Do I have any announcements before moving forward? I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Do I have a second? All those in favor? In our packet, we have meeting minutes from our regular meeting and executive session on November 18th. If there's no questions or comments, could I get a motion to approve those meeting minutes? Do I have a second? All those in favor? We have no correspondents this evening. On the agenda tonight, we have two public comment sessions. The first one is before the children's presentation, the second one after. If anybody would like to speak at this time, there's a microphone that you can approach with your name and address, or we have a second one later on this evening.
Hi, my name is Sybil Robbins. I live on Douglas Fair Court, and I wanted to just briefly talk about a number of parental choice bills that are out there for New York State. And I felt that this was a good time to bring it up because there's a lot of parents here that have children, and I know a lot of the parents, they like to leave after their children's presentations. I do have handouts for if anybody wants to copy these bills, but there are a few that parents should be concerned about. The first one is A 8655 requires annual drug screening for children between the ages of 12 and 18. It's part of an annual physical exam and requires certain insurance policies to provide coverage of such screening. S 791, A 1904 mandates comprehensive medically accurate and age appropriate such sexual education to be taught in all public schools, grades one through 12. A similar bill, S 4844, which is also A 6512, mandates comprehensive sexuality education for kindergarten through 12th grade. I would caution parents to please take a look at what these bills are, the content that is in these bills, and decide if the state is the appropriate people to be teaching your children these topics. And because there are young minds here at this meeting, I'm not going to discuss all the graphicness of these bills. There's also two mandatory flu bills, A 2316 and A 2276. There's risks involved with these bills. I'm hoping that parents read package inserts. Typically, they're about 20 pages long. In particular, sections 6.1, 6.2 talks about adverse events. Section four talks about contraindications. So if your child is allergic to something, you need to be aware what the section says. Your doctor does not disclose this as part of informed consent. Number S 3577 gives state government control and access to our health care. S 4244B allows an A 6564B, both recently revised, allows children 14 and older to be vaccinated without parental consent. In these bills, you will not know if your child is vaccinated. In New York City, they started to set up health clinics so they could be vaccinated at school, and you will not have an idea if something is wrong with your child if they don't tell you. I have a child that would not tell me, and I know there's a lot of other special needs children who are not able to give their consent, so there's many problems with this bill. A 099, this should be a concern for adults and children, allows for forced medical treatment under certain circumstances and allows detainment of perceived health threats. So if a child does not have a particular vaccination, or they should have a particular treatment, they will do it for you and detain you for up to 72 hours. A 7838 requires medical exemptions to be approved by the health department, by a doctor that has never seen your child before in their life. There's actually been a case for at Frontier where this has happened, and the health department said they had to approve it, where in fact, the school had to approve it. It had to be brought by a lawsuit. It was very costly to both the school district and the person that brought it. And Amir, the child who they were fighting for, he was now allowed to go back to school. And I want to also thank the board for writing a letter for S 3899A and A 973. This allows health care practitioners, I'm sorry, this is the wrong number, but I just must have skipped over that one. So also, S 3899A and A 973. This one also allows health care practitioners to administer any STD vaccine, including Hep B and HPV, at age nine without parental consent or knowledge. And I want to thank the board for writing a letter in regards to the HPV bill imposing it because it's not something that, excuse me, is communicable in a school setting, and we know how it is communicable. It's on many of the health care pages. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. Anybody have any unfinished business? Dr. Hicks, superintendent's report.
We're going to start with third graders from Mrs. Bosworth and Mrs. Barkley's class on their weather unit. So it's all up to you, Ms. Principal.
Good evening, everyone. We're thrilled to have our third graders here. You might have seen some of their posters from their climate unit and storm unit that they've been working on. These are four groups. This is from Mrs. Bosworth and Mrs. Barkley's third grade class. They're very excited. We asked who would like to be a part of this and show their presentation, and we got 16 students. So thank you for the families that came here tonight and supported their being here. I'll now hand this off to Mrs. Bosworth, the third grade teacher.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for coming. When Mrs. Aldrich asked Mrs. Barkley and I to present for the board, we decided that since we were doing weather and science, that we would get the kids to do some research about storms. Then we contacted Mrs. Perry, our librarian, and she was able to get us some different leveled books, some technology sites. We put them into cooperative groups, and then they began reading, writing, and drawing, working together, and then they put it all together into a PowerPoint with the help of Ms. Barkley, our technology person. And that's what you're going to see right now is their presentation.
Welcome to our science presentation. We learned about four different storms.
In science, we are studying weather and climate. To begin the unit, our class was broken up into four groups. Each group researched about a different storm. With the information we found, we made posters and PowerPoint slides. We researched books and computer sites that just probably go.
When we worked in our groups, each group had a group leader and who was in charge of making sure everyone had a job and participated. Each group also had someone who wrote the research down. Together, we created our project.
Our group learned about tsunamis. A tsunami is a monster wave that can travel 100 miles and is as fast as 500 miles per hour.
Did you know that monster waves from tsunamis can spread energy in all directions? We learned that this happens in the Pacific Ocean and near beaches.
Another interesting fact we learned was volcanoes and earthquakes underwater cause tsunamis.
Our group learned about tornadoes. We found out that tornadoes are very strong winds and usually come with thunderstorms. When a tornado happens, tree branches break and tall buildings crumble. Did you know that strong tornadoes destroy anything in its path, and a tornado can hop its path?
We learned about tigers, tigers, and, 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 and.
We researched blizzards. We found out that blizzards are strong snowstorms with high winds and very low temperatures.
Did you know blizzards happen when water vapors turn into ice crystals? Then snow falls on power lines and trees. People can get stuck in their houses and cars. Some people lose power.
Blizzards can occur in cold places around the world, even in Buffalo and Clarence, Brrr.
We have the hurricane group. We learned that hurricanes are huge spinning storms that have fast winds and heavy rates. Hurricanes begin over warm water around the equator.
An interesting fact we found out was hurricane winds can often travel at speeds over 186 miles per hour. The winds are so strong they can blow down houses and pull up trees.
Did you know what I always tend to have for hurricane is calm?
We also found out that hurricanes mostly start in summer and fall.
Before they end it, this is me just jumping in. I want to say how proud we are of all of these students. In third grade, we haven't done our research unit yet. That happens later on in our reading and writing, and for them to do this early was really remarkable. And we hadn't done any speech giving or anything like this. And with Mrs. Barkley's help, and Mrs. Burden's help, and Mrs. Perry's help, and Mrs. Aldrich's help, we were able to put this together, and I think they did a remarkable job. They have some closing lines for you first, though.
Thank you for coming to tonight's presentation. We hope you learned something new about storms. Hope you have a great night.
Thank you, Mrs. Bosworth and Mrs. Barkley, and third graders. You were terrific. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Mrs. Aldrich. We're going to pause slightly and allow our third graders to exit and get home. Report is the Foundation, Clarence Schools Enrichment Foundation. I'm going to turn it over to Jenna DePiscali.
Good evening. We'd like to start tonight just by showing, before we do our presentation to our new grant winners, a quick video that came from Mrs. Harris from Sheridan Hill Elementary and just how some of the funds are being used in our library programs. So we just wanted to share that just because it is one of the grants that we funded in many of the elementary schools for robotics and programming, and so we thought we'd share where the money's going and how it's being used, which is nice to see. On behalf of CSF, I'd like to present to the Board of Education the winners of our Fall 2019 Biannual Grant Program. This fall, we received 27 grant applications requesting a total of $24,763.95. I'm proud to announce that the CSF Board has approved the funding of 15 grants totaling $15,572.72. The Grant Selection Committee looked for grants that would enhance the educational experiences of students in the Clarence Central School District by offering ancillary enrichment in the arts, sciences, math, technology, applied career skills, and athletics. They took into consideration the number of students impacted, the need of the project, and the alignment with the goals of the school district and individuals within the building, within the districts. I'd like to ask for Mona Hales. She's the CSF Secretary, Board of Education member, and CSF liaison, Don Snyder, and our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Hicks, to please come forward and help us present our certificates to the grant recipients. Our first grant recipient, Laura Kopp and Jessica Moore, sensory room at the middle school. Jessica Stacouits, bibliotherapy library at Ledgeview. The librarians work together, so every school receives the same grant for their library. Christine Barry-Crazman, bibliotherapy for Sheridan Hill. Karen Vasquez, Stephanie Eichinger, Kim Metz, and Roz Vazi for enriching the environment through differentiated seating at Sheridan Hill. Colleen Hodgson, Buffalo Ski Club Field Trip, Harris Hill. Michelle Braun-Burgat, bibliotherapy, Harris Hill. Ron Kotlick, virtual reality and digital storytelling at the high school. Jody Ryspirskey and Deborah Gardner, inclusive Makerspace continuation at the high school. Lisa Miller, community-based instruction at the middle school. Laura Cope, community experiences at the middle school. Kevin Modlemayr, family support center education for the district. Jeannie Rook and Leslie Heim, poetry workshop at the middle school. Renee Harris, literature-inspired activities at the Sheridan Hill Library. Erin Ostrom and Tara Ignello, bibliotherapy library at Clarence Center. Jeannie Rook, The Outsiders at the Toy Middle School, it's a field trip. Since the beginning of our grant program in the fall of 2014, CSF has awarded 133 grants totaling $138,624.40. These programs have been made possible by generous donations from members of our community and through the support of our three major fundraising events during the year. On behalf of the Foundation, I'd like to publicly applaud the individuals for developing enrichment activities for the students of Clarence. CSF is thrilled to support these opportunities and celebrate the efforts of these district employees and their dedication and commitment to their students. CSF would also like to take the opportunity to announce our support of two additional Clarence programs. The first is a $1,000 donation to the Clarence Post-Prom 2020 event. We have continued to support this event, I think, for the third time. Clarence Post-Prom embodies CSF's core values of providing safe and supportive educational enhancement for students by offering seniors an alcohol- and substance-free party following the prom. Many Clarence High School students volunteer their time and efforts at CSF fundraising events and were proud to contribute to a celebration of their accomplishments. The second is a $5,000 donation to the Ledgeview PTO in support of the Outdoor Education Pavilion. We support this initiative because we believe a healthy body is as important as a healthy mind. We look forward to seeing the Ledgeview students get out of the traditional classroom and be able to use this structure for alternative learning experiences. Thank you.
Thank you, CSF officers. We will pause for a second, teachers, if you're going to exit. The superintendent's report is Bob Ranieri and friends.
I also brought with me core team members of our information technology security team. Brandon Montross is a network and security engineer with the Winnebago, with Erie One Bosse's, who we have services through, and Mickey Jacobson, our server engineer, who's another key piece of our team. So a couple items that we wanted to go over with the board was the prevention and information security, where we are, state of the union, kind of what we do on a daily basis, and how we protect ourselves and how we prepare for potential threats. We have services through Erie One Bosse's where we have enhanced firewalls. So we have a very deep nitty-gritty dive of what goes on, and we have alerting that comes out of that traffic. And it analyzes it real-time, so that we have real-time alerts. So if there's a compromise, or there's malware, or there's a virus or something somewhere, it alerts us right away. It not only alerts myself and Mickey, Brandon's team is key in that process as well. Those are kind of little graphs of what we kind of see on a daily basis. We have, we do monthly vulnerability scanning internally inside of our network. So it gives us analysis of all the operating systems that we have, the vulnerabilities that are, have been recommended to be patched by those manufacturers, Microsoft, Linux, whomever else it may be, Apple. And it classifies those for us as to, hey, this is really critical. It needs to be patched right away, or this is a low-lying fruit. You can patch it later on. Patching and upgrading is something that we do on a regular basis, and the reports that we get from these systems are extremely granular. So they go right down to the last bit version of the software that we're running. And if we're not running that one, then it's not going to be applicable to us. But it gives us, lets us know what it patches us for, how it secures us, and how soon we should implement that patch. One of the other pieces that we do in the network, not only in the infrastructure, on the data center side, but we do it throughout the entire district, is something called network segmentation. Basically putting computers in little rooms, little blocks of addresses, so that if something happens, it can't spread to the entire district. It contains it in that little environment, so like a cell. One of the things that we are planning on doing as a district, and something that the Winnebago is already doing on a routine basis, is penetration testing. We'll begin penetration testing after we implement, make a couple changes in our infrastructure to, so that we don't cripple things while we do them. And that should be coming in the first half of 2020. Another thing that we are planning for in 2020 is going to be something we call Forta Client. It's a little piece of software we're going to add on to our mission-critical servers, like our Power Schools and our things like that, that will give us even more analysis of what that machine is doing and kind of try to trend its behavior so that if we see something, it'll be able to detect that kind of ransomware-ish virus or things like that. So that's something that we're going to be adding. Another piece that we're going to add, hopefully in the year, is going to be looking to use maybe some third-party intrusion tools, so we can use some services from outside vendors just to give us another view of that security and how tight it is, or where we need to tighten, or where we need to make the adjustments. Backups and replication are obviously key to our, key to our plan. We back up daily, weekly, monthly, and we go in between two sites right now, so we have two copies of everything. Again, something in the future that we're looking for is planning is that third off-site location, which is key in any ransomware prevention or ransomware planning. One of the most important pieces of our technology security is really our user base. The RIC1, RIC1 is a consortium of all the RICs in the state of New York, and they've put out some documentation for us to use, and they've done some analysis, and they feel that 95% of cyber attacks are user-inflicted. So we've taken that information. We've kind of known that. We've been kind of leading up to this anyway, but we've made sure that we are hitting all of our faculty and staff with regular security training to know what to click on, what not to click on. We've put some other preventative measures in place as well for them. Trying not to be a burden, but trying to be secure enough at the same time, trying to walk that fine line. We've developed several different plans. One of them that we have is, it's internal documentation, but it gives us a good idea of, it gives us an exact roadmap of what we need to do. We developed a disaster recovery plan. So what does that do? The disaster recovery plan is really for physical disasters. There's a fiber cut. There's a fire. There's a long-term power outage, things like that. And this plan gives us a roadmap of how are we going to get everything back up and running as fast as we possibly can? And how are we not going to lose data? Two of the other ones that we use, I don't want to say more frequently. Well, we do because we've never used the other one, but let's hope we don't have to, is our incident response plan, which is more around the systems that we have. So if we have a piece of malware get into a system, or if we have a virus get onto a computer, that is when we enact our incident response plan, and that gives us an exact map of what we need to do and where we need to go and how we need to address it. The other one that we use way more frequently is our, and we decided to make it a plan because of how often we ended up using it, is phishing responses. Phishing emails are almost the number-one way ransomware gets into any organization anymore. And so we have an exact step-by-step. Any member of our team can pick it up, look at it, and mitigate. So that's what we have put into place. That's what we have. Any questions?
I did tell Mr. Ranieri it's not fair that Matt isn't here tonight. Should we respond to the email from my Nigerian prince?
No.
Just to kind of frame up how bad this is, I mean, how often on a daily basis are you guys being alerted to like phishing?
The phishing is definitely the number-one that we see from our side. We've had three, what I would call, major incidents that we've had this school year alone, and I would classify a major of over 100 recipients. alone, and I would classify a major of over 100 recipients of an email.
Somebody clicked and it started to go.
Yeah, emails of those caliber. Now, we haven't had 100 users click on those, but we'd have maybe three, I would say we had three incidents that were over 100 quantities of emails. So, over 100 people got that exact email.
So, then you can mitigate it once you see it.
Yeah, so that's, that's the part of what we train our users on, is as soon as you get it, we've got to know, because a couple of them, nobody from our team got them. So, we didn't know until somebody gave it to us at this point in time, and as soon as we got that email, the first one took us about, I think it was like 40 minutes to get it rid out of everybody's mailbox, and the second one and the third one was under 15 minutes that we were able to basically capture that email that was in hundreds of mailboxes that people were potentially going to click on. Hopefully not after they took our training, but, and able to strip that out of their mailbox to really make sure that we got rid of it.
So, Bob, it's safe to say that there's dozens of emails every day from BOCs or some other place that you have to block those senders?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, we get alerts through the Security Service that they, they're sending us five to 10 a day probably from, from, from the, from the service that we're part of, and they send us the potential domains for the, for the bad email, the phishing emails, or the, you know, whatever kind of emails there are out there, but they'll send us screenshots and addresses, we could block all the domains automatically and react that way a little bit, kind of be a bit proactive. Even though our domain wasn't exactly targeted, another domain in the Erie One District was, so we get those alerts.
I was going to ask, so we share services through BOCs? I think our email server is that?
Our email is actually cloud-based. It's off a 365 cloud-based, yep.
So, I guess, and maybe the answer is, is there's no concern, but with our integration with BOCs or other third parties, I mean, how concerned are we of the steps that they're taking? Are we comfortable, is there any way that, you know, through any communications that we have through some of our partners, that that could be a way in?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of why Brandon's here, so he could talk to us a little bit about that. But basically, because we're cloud-based, all of our internet, all of our email traffic is actually flowing through the firewalls, so it's going through all those same analytics and things like that. Brandon, do you want to talk about anything about what the firewall could do for that traffic?
So, we have 100 school districts going through it. All the school districts that are part of the Enhanced Security Service, which you guys are a part of, are sending analytical data, files, anything suspicious that the firewall recognizes. It has an antivirus built into it, but it can send stuff to a sandbox as well to do further testing, to actually run the files, click on the links, and look for that kind of data. Anything that it finds that may be malicious or even just suspicious, it sends all that data down to all of the firewalls. So, everyone that's part of the service is helping each other to mitigate that, to identify that, and then those links that you see in the email, Bob may delete them in 15 minutes, but if we scan it up at the RIC, in the sandboxes and find it suspicious, that stuff will start getting blocked at the firewall immediately as well. So, even if a user may click on it, it may already be blocked, it may be a dead link at that point. I can't tell you exactly how fast it takes, it really depends on how much is going on during the day, but that's, that's ultimately what the service is about. It's about sharing information, it's about protecting everybody as a group, and securing everybody as well, as much as we possibly can.
When you say sandbox, what is that referring to?
A sandbox is a virtual environment, so it's, it's a computer, a virtual computer. It runs on a very large computer. We can, we can run, I think, 60 different files in 60 different virtual PCs at a time. We run them, we test them, we see what it's doing, what it does to the system, where it goes, what it wants to do. We look at all that, there's a whole lot of information that runs on behind the scenes to see what's going on, and based on all that information, it determines whether it's a threat or not.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bob, Mickey, and Brandon, very much.
All right, thank you all.
This is always, this is a huge deal for us. Thankfully, we have these young, very smart guys to take care of everything. That concludes the superintendent's report. Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. X. All right, Mr. Mancrusel, Finance?
Sure, there's a couple things in the financial report that I wanted to touch base on. Remember, when you've got your first draft of the budget calendar for this coming season, the second memo is a memo from our transportation supervisor with the recommended bus purchase plan for this coming year. There's no action on any of this tonight, that is just for your information. Typically, what we will do is, a couple of months prior to the vote, we'll ask the board to approve, to put on the ballot, a resolution to purchase buses. The last item that we have here in this section is a resolution that the town of Clarence also passed, so that New York State can do a study in front of a high school. So, our hope would be to lower the speed limit and put some signage up there, so that it's a safer environment. As you know, if you've been near the high school, especially at dismissal, it is very difficult with adults and students leaving at the same time. The second item that I have is to approve the, and accept, the results of the capital project vote. So, December 3rd, we had our capital project vote. While it was a low turnout, it was an 84% approval rating. So, we've got $27.2 million capital project. In the next meeting or two, I'll have bonding resolutions, so that we could start the borrowing process for the project to get going. We've got a little timeline that I put in here that, you know, we'll try to get the plans and specs to New York State by April of 2020. We would hopefully that they'll be approved October, November of 2020, where we could bid everything, and it would be great if we could award it prior to the end of 2020, November or December. What that would do will be allow us to have contracts in place, so that as soon as the weather breaks, in essence, and even some other internal work that we can start off shift that does not affect student environments, we could begin in April of 2021. Remember, the process will bring us to a borrowing, which will take place, so that the 2022-23 school year will have the first debt service payment of substance, so that it tails off right where one, it begins where one tails off.
Rick, it's not on tonight, but could you just review where we stand with the project management stuff?
Sure. So, the architect was named, and now that the project is passed, I will bring the formal contract to the, with the architect to you at some time. What we did is we did a short-term agreement, because the amount of duties that they have prior to referendum passing is significantly less than once it, once it passes. So, now we'll have the standard contract. The next piece to that, which I hope to have to you in January, is a construction management firm. When we put the specifications out for the architect, we did require that this project will have a construction management firm also. So, we'll have that information to you also.
You expect both of those at January's meeting?
I'm going to try. Last item that we have is, New York State has a new requirement that says the district needs to formally name a data protection officer. Worked out perfect that you had the presentation from Mr. Ranieri. Certainly, everything that he and his staff does falls into the requirements that have attached from New York State. So, we'd like to formally name Mr. Ranieri as our data protection officer, and this will become an annual item at the reorganization meeting, like when we make all of the standard annual requirements.
Any questions on the financials?
I just have one question on the project. Change orders get submitted to the board, or is that something that goes through just?
Just goes through our process.
So, if it's over the $35,000?
If it's over the $35,000, it's not a change order, and I've got to actually bid it, and that will come to the Board of Education.
So, anything up to $35,000, we wouldn't see?
Right, right.
Is it standard?
Absolutely. All those things are usually field items, you know, they'll, they'll run into a wall where they have to change some plumbing, when they're putting a handicap-accessible bathroom in, and those are just things that we need to process and rush through, not rush through, but we do need to get done in an expedited fashion. And that's typically why we, we have the, you know, my office, the superintendent, we take care of those small ones. Anything over $35,000, the state doesn't consider a change order, it's not incidental to what the work was, and we will have to do a formal bid, or it could have been an alternate on the original bid, but in any case, that would still have to have formal board approval.
Do you need any one-off votes on any of these resolutions?
No, no, these could all be together.
Okay, all right. No other questions? Can I get a motion to approve all the finance items, F1 to F4 on the agenda? Do I have a second? All those in favor? Curious. Mr. Michelle?
We have your approval this evening, two appointments for varsity assistant coaches, a list of staff members that will serve as supervisors and spectators. This is a new structure where it is a per diem, where they can sign up for particular events or be as needed when we need additional supervision. Regents review instructors for the high school, approval for after-school AIS positions at the elementary level, three mentors for regular substitutes. P2 is a recommendation actually for winter curriculum, it's listed in the packet under summer curriculum because of the rate that appears in the CTA contract. P3 is approval for presentation compensation. We also have the approval for tenure of Mr. Alan Simpson, who's a social studies in, in Clarence Middle School. He was for your review last month, approval this month. And last is the approval for the additions to our substitute list. The addendum, just on that yellow piece of paper in front of you, there's the addition of our mentor liaison position that's an annual one.
Are there any questions on the instructional section? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve items P1 to P5? Do I have a second? All those in favor? Curious. Non-instructional?
Non-instructional. P6 is termination of an employee. We also have four resignations, one for retirement purposes. Mary Jo Quigley will be retiring this spring after 12 years of service. Thank you to her and her work at the high school. P8 adds additional time for one employee based on the needs of students. There's one request for unpaid extension of a leave of absence, one return to employment, active employment. The list of appointments that are there, we have one bus driver, three of our civil service positions, now that the lists have been published, we're able to move them from provisional to permanent, four teacher aides, one part-time cleaner, and one-time part, one part-time typist. P12 information items contain, just for your information, not to be acted on, two billing transfers, one shift change, and just notification, a reminder that the minimum wage will change at the end of the month. The only employees that that will affect are actually our student lifeguards. The last piece in the non-instructional is again, updates to our substitute list.
Any questions on non-instructional? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve items P6 to P11 and P13?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? Aye, as approved. Thank you.
I just have one quick question. Right now, do we have middle school secretaries at the two, at the two house offices, or I'll be looking for those?
We are actively interviewing for one of the positions, and the most recent one you're acting on this evening, so we'll start that process.
Special needs and student activities?
We had 38 school-age special education meetings. These are mostly changes to the IEP, and 16 CPSE preschool meetings, mostly brand-new kids into the system.
Any questions on items S1 and S2? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve said?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? Curious. We have nothing under board development or policy items this evening. That brings us to our second and final public comment session of this evening. If anybody has anything to add, I think we have a microphone somewhere.
Good evening. My name is Nicole, and I live on Michael Douglas Drive. I wanted to first thank you for your commitment to lobby against Senate Bill S298B and Assembly Bill A2912, the bill's mandating immunization of all children born after January 1st, 2009, against a human papilloma virus, also known as HPV. It was immensely appreciated by many in our community that you presented our concerns to the district's Legislative Advocacy Committee. We value the proactive step you took to hopefully prevent more children from being de-enrolled. Although homeschooling has many, many benefits, it's not a situation anyone should be forced into doing. The cost alone has been an immense burden on our family since I had to resign to home educate my children. Not only have I lost my salary, we've also had to switch to my husband's high deductible health insurance, which requires us to pay for everything in full and out of pocket with one less salary. However, that's not the only cost we endure. The cost of curriculum to cover arithmetic, reading, spelling, writing, English, geography, US history, New York State history, science, and health requirements this year have been about $400, and that's only because I'm using a majority of my personal teaching resources. Physical education requirements can be fulfilled through the YMCA, but for $550 for my two children. Violin lessons for my daughter will cost me $1,000 for the school year. Private music lessons for my son is another $1,000. Both are, both are required to fulfill the music requirement. To cover the visual arts requisite, art lessons are $100 per child for a four-week course. Therefore, it's $2,000 for both my children to take 40 weeks of art classes. These costs total about $5,000 per year, and that doesn't include field trips, classes to supplement extracurricular activities they're missing out on, such as musical theater classes and sports teams, dance classes, additional gas money driving to the aforementioned activities, state testing sites, website subscriptions, and additional supply costs to cover science projects, crafts, and hands-on activities we're doing at home. I share these numbers because it's imperative that others realize what we are being forced to sacrifice in order to preserve our beliefs. In 2019, almost 400 years after the pilgrims came to the New World to escape religious persecution, sadly, money isn't the only thing that's being sacrificed. Relationships, friendships, and a sense of community have all taken a toll. In closing, I don't want other families to be forced to go through what my family and others in our community have already gone through if the HPV or flu, flu bill, flu bill is mandated, flu shot is mandated. Therefore, thank you again for taking the first step to stand in support of the families residing in your district. As always, thank you for your dedication to our community.
Thank you.
My name is Mindy Sauer. I live on High Street, and I just wanted to thank you for your letter of support and opposition of the mandates. It means a great deal to us and another reason why we love our schools so much.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? Seeing none. In our packet, we have the schedule of upcoming meetings. Our next regular board meeting will be on January 13th. That will be at the middle school, and that'll be the first meeting where we talk about the budget, followed by a board winter retreat on January 25th. There's no other questions or comments, so entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing the evaluation of a particular employee. Do I have a second? All those in favor? All right, you're adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.